The August fourteenth meeting of the Planning Commission, the Alsgood New Planning Commission. We'll start with the roll call.
Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner McCavity.
Here.
Vice Chair Inga is running late, but he will be present. And Chair Magai.
Here.
We have quorum.
And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then I'll open public communication. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make public comment on a non-agendized item? It doesn't look like it. So we will close public communications and move to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. One is the minutes and one is, and the other is an administrative use permit that we can pull off as the applicant here by chance. If not, it's okay. So we can pull that off the consent calendar and we can receive some comments on that. But first, let's, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-fourth meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from the July twenty-fourth meeting.
Your second.
Second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes for all.
Then we'll move to our second item. It's a revision A to environmental assessment number EA one three five two administrative use permit to allow a type forty-one ABC license for the state for the sale of beer and wine for onsite and offsite consumption. With new restaurant within an existing retail establishment, Bloom Wine and Flowers located at one five zero South PCH Unit E. Do we have a presentation?
We do. Good evening, chairing commissioners. I'll be presenting the item before you, which is for Bloom Wine and Flowers. Bloom Wine and Flowers currently operates under an ABC type twenty license, which allows for off sale of wine. For the conditions of approval, they are to pair the off sale of wine with flowers. And they're currently proposing no changes to this current ABC license that they hold. We are before you here today because the applicant is proposing to introduce a restaurant component to the retail space. It's going to be within the existing space. And the integration of the restaurant within the existing retail store is compatible with the surrounding uses in the C three zone and is in compliance with the C three zone, as well as it encourages a mixed use. As a result of the restaurant, the applicant is requesting to amend the existing AUP on file to include a new ABC type license, which will be an ABC type forty-one license, which allows the sale of beer and wine with the pairing of food. Aside from the modification to the additional ABC license type, they are proposing to modify the existing business hours as the table shows. The dining area will approximately be a hundred and thirty-two square feet inside. It is a small retail space or restaurant as well. And they are going to be reducing their existing retail space to three hundred and twenty-one square feet. The kitchen roughly is around eighty-six square feet. And they're going to be continuing to use space as well for the preparation of flowers, storing and storing the wine. The individual onsite sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption is prohibited. All sales for onsite sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption must be paired with food services as well. Alcohol service is ancillary to the primary restaurant use and contributes to the economic vitality of the business and commercial center. The proposed service will not create any new impacts that would not normally be associated with the operation of the retail establishment or the restaurant. And will continue to be consistent with the C three general commercial zone. Staff has reviewed the proposed modifications and is recommending for the planning commission to receive and file the director's decision to approve the amendment to the AUP. The applicant is also present if you have any questions.
So I can jump in with a question here. So just to clarify, so they're not allowed to sell beer and wine without selling food, right?
That is for onsite consumption, correct.
But that, does that apply to each individual customer? A customer cannot go in? Do they have to order food if they get a glass of wine?
If they want to have onsite consumption, yes. Yeah. So it's somewhat similar to the same conditions that we applied to the sell of, the off sale of wine, where it had to be paired with flowers. And the ABC license type that they are applying for also requires the sale of food service or food with the pairing of beer and wine for onsite consumption.
Yeah. And just to clarify, you know, I think the intent behind some of the conditions, for example, pairing for offsite, in the original AUP, we put in a condition that it'd be paired with the sale of of a flower so that it doesn't become, you know, synonymous with like a liquor store, right? Where people just go in, purchase alcohol and leave. And then same thing here where, you know, we try to avoid any kind of misconception that it's a bar. So again, the whole intent of that condition is that, is that it be paired with food, so.
Okay. But to the individual customer, each customer has to do that, okay?
That's correct.
I'm just, is there already a restaurant portion in there?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. I peeked in, it looks so cute.
Yeah.
It looks adorable. So they're going to build like a food?
Yeah, they're, they're currently under, have a tenant improvement building permit in the process where they're going to be remodeling inside to accommodate the new kitchen and the indoor dining space. They will also have outdoor dining space, but it's very, very small.
In the front there, right, near like?
Yeah, like in the little plaza, yeah.
Okay, so cute. That area, like it's starting to boom up a little because that, I go to that Offset Coffee and the Fannies a lot, so I'm excited.
How many tables outside?
Only two.
Only two. Sorry, I'm late.
Any other questions for staff before we open public comment? Okay, so let's open public comment on this item. And we have the applicant here, so they want to make the first comments on this item? Please.
I don't know, we can take a stage for a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
I know, I've seen a couple of the faces at the store, so happy to see everyone here. My name is Julia and I'm one of the owners of Bloom Wine and Flowers. My other half is heavily pregnant, so she apologizes she can't be here. So I'm actually one of the main applicants here because I'm the wine side of the business. So we decided to expand a little bit due to our customers really want to try wines that we sell since it's a very small kind of boutiquey wines. And by no means we want to open a bar. I also have two children at home and I don't want to be working late nights or anything. And we will be giving people, each individual people, a little antipasto with their, with their glass of wine. Again, the beer is not going to be on top, it's just going to be like a beer that they can open, like a small beers from the fridge, so it's not going to be looking like a bar. We are building a little kitchen or we will be building a little kitchen in the back that will allow us to prep a small finger foods and little appetizers, snacky things that will go along with the wine pairings. And I, I think that, that will bring even more life into that. And Alsgood in general, into that small shopping mall in particular, because there is already a prime pizza in there that opened till nine PM and there is El Po Inca next door. And it just feels very natural that we will offer our little beverages while sometimes they waiting for their food to come or like some people are waiting in the traffic from one of those buildings going back home to LA. So a lot of customers been really asking us to like pour them a glass of wine. And I feel like our hands been tied, but we are growing fast. And I feel like it's just very natural for us to expand a little bit more and offer that. And I would appreciate if you guys will support us. Thank you.
You said the food was anti, antipasto type?
Yeah, like a little olives, charcuterie, like little crackers. We do feel like maybe over time, like some chefs can come and do like little pop-ups there. But again, it's a, I'm sorry, only the foods that do not require cooking as we, I don't think we want to get into that big cooking. None of us are chefs or anything. So it will just be very small always, kind of type of finger foods.
Fantastic. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Sounds good. I made you thirsty. I hope so. Thank you so much.
Just out of curiosity, like how did this evolve? Was it a flower, is it a flowers?
We are sharing the space, so it's a flower and the wines. But usually flowers take, like the preparation of the flowers take time like in the morning. So usually in the afternoon, after three or four, like nobody's making flowers. We do have like a bar area, like which is big table where the flower, they're making flowers. And then they just put it in the cooler, so it's just ready to grab bouquets if you want to. But then percentage wise, like in terms of the space, it's not as big, you know? So most of the things that we sell is wine and like little gifts and stuff. So if they do prepare some flowers, it's in the bag and they do it in their like floral market thing if they have a big event. So usually there are no bigger scale flower preparations in the store. If that makes sense.
And then in terms of, like you said, in terms of space, but like in terms of like sales? Like what is the mix there, flowers versus, what are you anticipating, I guess?
Flowers, actually, you would be surprised, they're killing it. Like they're, the flower portion of it is very popular and it's a very, you know, like established place already now. First of all, we have online, so people ordering online and we do deliveries in the South Bay and beyond. And there's a lot of like weddings happening and vans and they can do the preparation of the bouquets in the flower market facility. So for them, it's just very important to have a brick and mortar so people see their work and their arrangements versus just ordering online where you don't know what's going to come when you order online. I'm sure a lot of you, it happened to all of us when we order some scale and then something absolutely weird, nothing that looks in the picture comes. So, and sometimes like people are grabbing a bottle of wine and they like want to grab a little bouquet as well as a present. So in terms of like gift giving situation, for now, we're definitely fifty-fifty partners. And in terms of shared costs and shared income. But once we will open the tasting room, I would assume the wine will take over.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Kind of getting to. Is this going to be a wine place that's got flowers on the side? Or is it a flower place that's got wine on the side? You, you think it's going to be a wine place with flowers on the side?
It will be a wine place with a flower on the side.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's also one of the reasons why they're proposing to just add an additional ABC license versus removing or keeping the other because they're wanting to have both, kind of like, they're both uses that kind of like, you know, work off of each other.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it, it has like little tchotchke type little gift kind of things in there too, right? I've poked, I've poked my head in and it's really, it's cute. And I feel like their clientele is probably more female, I'm going to go with and be a little stereotypical.
I mean, a lot of men buy.
I like flowers.
I know. Men buy flowers generally for other people. Maybe we don't have to be gender specific. But it has a bright pink sign in the door that says bloom. Like it's, it's for like my eye walking by, it catches my eye every time and I'm up there quite a bit.
Or, or the, the women send their husbands, like that's where you need to go to buy me flowers.
Right.
Word of mouth travels fast. But like even as if I need something, I, I haven't looked at the gift stuff, but that, I would think you could make some money off of that too.
Yeah, we prepare gift baskets, like especially during the holiday seasons, that's very popular. We have like chocolates and candles and all those important things that are sold in there.
Is this the only, is this the initial location for this concept for you guys? Okay, well, we're an innovation hub, so I guess this is an innovation.
Any other questions for the applicant? Are there any other members, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. All comments on this item will just come from the dais at this point. I think that this is a fantastic idea. It's funny to see that little square change its character such a fast, a quick amount of time. And now it's still a lively place. I mean, the, the old piece of place was good, the Thai place was good, but it was never just a lively area like it is now. So having this add on to that, I think it's a fantastic thing. And I have, the, the wine there is fantastic. If you're in charge of the wine, a couple of weeks ago, I, I bought a bag of organic skin contact wine there and. Yeah, the bags. We've come a long way since Peter Fransia started the, the trend. But yeah, I think this is a fantastic idea. And if anyone would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I say con.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Yes.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes for all.
Thank you. We're going to move the agenda around since we have a guest coming to give a presentation. We're going to move item number four before the public hearing. So this is South Bay City Council of Governments' presentation on the city's climate action plan and its twenty nineteen, twenty twenty greenhouse gas inventory.
Thank you, Chair Magai. I know that, you know, I had asked if we could just reorder this agenda just as, you know, the speakers with the COG, who's got some, some other locations to go to. But, so I appreciate you accommodating this request.
Right. Awesome. Thank you so much for accommodating. Thank you for having me here. I'm, my name is Kevin Trung and I'm a Civic Spark fellow with the South Bay City's Council of Governments. During my fellowship and time with the COG, I worked on energy efficiency of our public agencies as well as the finalizing of twenty nineteen, sorry, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty greenhouse gas emissions or GSG emissions inventories for our member cities, including the city of Elsagundo, which I will be presenting now. So we all know climate change is happening. It's caused by carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide and other greenhouse gases going up into the atmosphere, trapping heat, raising the global average temperature, which has knock-on effects like extreme heat, more whiplashing of like extreme storms and extreme weather, et cetera. And so a greenhouse gas emissions inventory can be a very powerful tool to assess the impact that an agency, organization, or a city is contributing to climate change and potentially identify strategies to reduce that impact. So the COG has had a long history of working with our cities, including the city of Elsagundo, on climate action planning and emissions inventories. We first did inventories for the city for two thousand and five and two thousand and seven and then followed that up with inventories for twenty ten and twenty twelve. Using those inventories with two thousand and five as a baseline, we worked with city staff and to create and have the city council adopt the climate action plan in twenty seventeen, which set emissions reduction target, emissions reduction targets for twenty twenty and twenty thirty-five based on state targets at the time. And over the past few years, since twenty twenty has passed, we've been working with city staff to create an emissions inventory update to assess progress towards that twenty twenty goal. So to go over the goals that were set in the city adopted cap in twenty seventeen, the goals are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions compared to two thousand and five baseline levels by fifteen percent by twenty twenty and forty-nine percent by twenty thirty-five. One thing I'd like to note is that since the cap was drafted, the state has been very proactive in its climate action and has set a new goal with AB twelve seventy-nine with the goals listed there of carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five and an eighty-five percent reduction in emissions compared to nineteen ninety levels. So one thing to consider as we move forward is potentially setting a new target for twenty forty-five that would align with the state's goal based on the results of this inventory. Going over briefly over the methodology, we worked with different agencies and organizations like the utilities, with the cities, with CalRecycle, et cetera, to pull together activity data, which is the raw data like your energy consumption factor sets, which can break that data into emissions numbers. We've worked specifically with a software called ECLi ClearPath. ECLi is an international organization that works on sustainability and climate for local governments. And ClearPath is the industry standard software that they use, that we've used to calculate these emissions. So going over the inventory for the city, these are the sectors that we have included. Transportation, residential energy, commercial and industrial energy, solid waste, wastewater, and fugitive emissions from natural gas leakage and distribution. One thing to note about the sectors and methodologies is that it has evolved over time as the science has become more concrete. So as an example of that, water emissions specifically for energy consumption from distributing water used to be a separate sector, but from our data collection, that's actually been aggregated into the energy sector. So now I'll go into the results or high level overview results of the inventory. In two thousand and five, Elsagundo's community emissions were over six hundred thousand and that has gotten down to over two hundred and sixty-six thousand in twenty nineteen and two hundred and fifty-six thousand in twenty twenty. That is a fifty-six percent reduction and a fifty-eight percent reduction compared to two thousand and five levels respectively. And to briefly sum up the goals from before, it's a fifteen percent reduction by twenty twenty and a forty-nine percent reduction by twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five. So Elsagundo has successfully passed both of those targets, which is pretty impressive. So here are some reasons for why we're seeing improvement. Just in general, we're seeing SoCal Edison and just have a greater increase in renewable energy totals and having cleaner. Uh, increase in renewable energy totals and having cleaner energy as a part of their mix. Uh, energy efficiency efforts ranging from LED light bulbs to HTRAC upgrades, the HEUP upgrades, et cetera. And the adoption of electric vehicles or EVs that reduces the amount of fossil fuels consumed from cars, basically. These aren't a comprehensive list, it's also attributed to things like increased recycling and composting, but these are just some of the big reasons that I've listed out. Going by sector, um, transportation and energy make up the vast majority of emissions about. Or over ninety five percent of El Segundo's emissions, and so when it comes to reducing the city's emissions. Strategies to reduce emissions from transportation and energy would be the greatest focus, but obviously. Any emissions reductions efforts across all sectors would be, make a difference in reducing the city's impact on, uh, climate change. To put these numbers into perspective, because they're a little bit abstract, I've provided some comparisons here. So, the amount of emissions reduced from two thousand five to two thousand nineteen is equivalent to. The carbon, amount of carbon sequestered by over three hundred thirty seven thousand acres of forest, the emissions emitted by. About nine tenths of natural gas power plant and over seventy eight thousand gas powered vehicles. So, what are some potential next steps for the city to do with this information? Uh, as I mentioned, the state has set a new twenty forty five target, so one thing to say would consider is going back to the cap that was adopted previously. Reassessing the strategies or modifying or adding new strategies and setting a twenty forty five target ba- based on. Uh, this inventory and like projections going towards that year. Additionally, this inventory could be used to update any policy or regulatory documents, for example, I'm aware the city is currently working on updating its general plan. So, this emissions inventory could be something to include or factor into the, that updating of that. And lastly, another potential action would be to pursue grant funding and awards using these inventory findings. The Beacon Awards are one example that some of the member cities are using this inventory to, uh, pursue awards for, and there's also. I imagine some grant funding or grant awards that use these findings as a reference. With that, I'd like to give a special thank you to everyone at the COG, past and current fellows and staff and volunteers that have. Worked on this project or the past few years, on the city side, I'd like to thank Paul Samaras, the principal planner, for his support. And, uh, collaboration in obtaining data and reviewing of the inventory. And finally, to ICLI for their technical support and for the platform that they have used to. Allow us to conduct this inventory in the first place. Um, so with that, that wraps up my presentation and I will open the floor now to any questions from you, thank you.
Would any of the commissioners like to start, any questions or comments to Kevin?
Sure, um, I think you, you may have answered some of this, but do we have nineteen ninety baseline data that? We can track against this, the new twenty forty five goals?
To my recollection, I think we might have done some work to identify nineteen nine baseline levels, if, I'm not exactly sure. I know with, I think the county of LA recently had a climate ad- climate action plan and they're set. Their twenty forty five target based on using a different baseline level, but it's like trying to match. The state like target with the nineteen nine baseline level, so I imagine with like some forecasting, some more analysis, you could do something similar with like the two thousand five baseline.
Um, go ahead, someone else has other questions, I have others, but.
I'm sorry, here's on the, so it's twenty twenty, what's kind of the reason for the lag for five, five years, I'm just curious why, five years for it to come out?
Yeah, it's basically just the limited limitations in, uh, staff capacity, yeah. Not many people working on it and it's a very intense project, we're doing it for fifteen cities too, that's a lot of that to manage, so, yeah.
So, when would the next cycle, like when would we get the next update?
Uh, it's something for not entirely sure yet, I mean, we'll fi- we'll figure that out at some point, I imagine the next update for sure would be twenty thirty five. Just because that is the next year that was, like, next target year set out in the cap. But other than that, I don't, can't promise like any additional inventories yet.
So, I, I assume we did the twenty twenty five, uh, or the twenty twenty update because that was the, we had targets that year, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, the next one would be twenty thirty five, but there's, we don't have any planned kind of intermediate check in analysis.
Uh, at the, currently at the COG, our capacity is limited, so that's not something we're looking to at the moment. Um, we do have an umbrella membership with, with ICLI and I know with the city of Manhattan Beach, for example, they actually. Consulted with ICLI to do their, uh, inventory, and so if that is something the city is interested, when we could. Potentially reach out to ICLI to do like in, in between inventory or coordinate with us to, uh, with the COG to. Have us like support you in any way, but I can't promise like any interim inventories in the meantime, yeah.
Wha- what was the other organization, what's it called?
ICLI, I C L E I, I forget what the acronym stands for off the top of my head.
It was on the previous slide, that the, the acronym.
It doesn't spell, it doesn't spell it out on there, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so the, the slider with the pie charts on it, I noticed the big, biggest piece of the pie is, uh, commercial industrial. So, does that include Chevron, and if it does, can, what portion of that is Chevron's versus, uh, you know, the light industrial stuff we have in the city?
I would imagine it does include Chevron, I'm can't, I'm like the exact contribution from Chevron's not something I. Aware of off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did, did, does someone else have that? Information we could get later?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
Yeah, I don't have a, I'm sorry, I don't have a direct answer for you right now.
Okay, and then the next slide, or maybe it's two slides, the, the next steps slide?
Yes.
So, I guess it would be interesting to get like the next step, who does what, and before we get, did, did you give this presentation to the environmental committee?
I did, yes.
Okay, okay, so they're, they're aware of this, so I think that is interesting, because you know, creating the forecasts, I think that we would rely on a technical organization like. The COG or ICLI to do that, it wouldn't be a city thing, but then setting the targets would be coming, coming from a recommendation from the environmental. Committee, correct, is that the, the right process?
Yeah.
And so would the, the strategies and, uh, the policy, well, I guess policy stuff would be planning, um, and the planning commission. So, it'd be good for, and I'm glad that they got this presentation, I do, because I think a lot of these next steps are falls on the environmental committee, so.
And yeah, if you're interested in the full report, it is available on our website at southbaycities.org, and I've also shared a copy with Paul, who can share it with you as well. Yeah, any other questions?
That was my question on this, southbaycities.org, if we go on there, those pie charts that we were just talking about, does it show the actual breakdown?
Uh, not further than what you saw on, on the presentation.
Who, who collected that data that's in those pie charts?
The, so a combination of like COG staff, basically.
Okay.
We basically were consulted or like reached out to the utilities, to CalRecycle, et cetera, to get, obtain the data.
So, is there like a tracking report of how that data was accumulated or put together?
Yes, so in the report, there is a methodology that describes the different sectors and where we got the data from. There's an appendix specifically goes into a lot more detail about that.
But not the names?
The names are men.
The names of the. Companies of the biggest contributors or anything like that?
Uh, that, no, that, we don't have.
Got it, okay.
And then this, the ICLI, eh, eh, who like certifies them, like you know what I mean, they're like. The local governments are using them, there's this clear path as the industry standard, like says who?
I guess says ICLI, well, the thing is, I, I think one additional piece of context I forgot to mention is that ICLI is the organization that actually created. The protocol for conducting the GSG inventories, so if you go on their website, you can actually find like the full like protocol, which is like. The community protocol as well as like the local government operations protocol, that's all written out and done by them, so.
So, like, um, for the state goal of twenty forty five.
Correct.
Would they rely on ICLI to ensure they're making, meeting that goal, or what, do we know how the state is collecting this data?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I would assume they are using like ICLI's recommendations as like a baseline as well as just, yeah.
I'm just curious like to make sure if we're in line with what the state wants, are we using the same?
Data, yeah.
Collector.
Yep.
Assessor.
Yep.
Interpreter, you know, it seems like a new area, which is good, which I feel like we need, but I just. Like, I, it doesn't even, it's just ICLI, it does, for local, for government sustainability, now I'm gonna have to deep dive on them.
Yeah.
But as long as if we know that's what the state is using as well, so that the city is setting itself up properly for this twenty forty five. Goal.
Right.
And I guess I'll go on their website and southbaycities.org.
Yes, southbaycities.org is our website and ICLI's separate organization, they have a separate website, but, yeah.
I would be curious to know what the feedback was from the environmental committee, because that technical body might. Have some insights for us there. Maybe save us some brain damage from, from this group.
If I may, Chair, I can, uh, follow up on that particular request with our colleagues in Public Works.
Okay, thank you. It'd be interesting to do a little bit of a deep dive to see how the reductions are so si- significant. When they're looking at kind of the reasoning here, the, the increased renewable energy only from seventeen to thirty five percent, I mean, that's significant, but I mean, the, the. Drop that we see on the previous slide is, you know, significantly more than that percentage and then. Electric vehicle adoption and energy efficiency, um, yeah, to me, it doesn't explain that significant drop, there has to be something else going on there in a good way.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, like, I mean, did we all get electric, you know what I mean, like, I know you have your electric vehicle, I've got mine, did we together like. Create this huge drop, yeah, I was curious about the data beneath those pie charts, they were very.
They're pretty.
It was cool.
Easy to read for me, which is important, because there's like, there's, there's math in here that I don't wanna read.
Yeah.
But, um, is it because of everybody's push for the solar before that law changed, you know, we also did solar. Because we wanted to make sure we got in on that early enough, was that the big push?
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's all, they all play a part, but like the exact to what extent it contributed to like the emissions, that's not something I. We need a deep dive for, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good to know, you know, what contributed the most, but also how we rank against our neighbors. Have the exact same reductions or did we do something different, but?
Yeah, well, in terms of that, we are, like, I, like I briefly mentioned, we are doing the inventories for all fifteen of our member cities, and like, if you go on our website. Uh, the reports of all the cities that we've like finalized the reports for are up there as well, so you are able to compare.
Yeah, okay. So, sorry, I'm, I know I'm supposed to go to the website, but, um, have you done like our immediate neighbors, so like Manhattan? Or Hawthorne or any of those cities?
Yes.
They're done, so they're there, we can compare?
Manhattan Beach, I'm working on finalizing right now and I'll be up, Hawthorne, we're still waiting for our city feedback.
So, no, okay, alright. Okay, no, real problem, no problem.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for this, this is very informative, appreciate your, your hard work on it.
Alright, awesome, thank you so much, thank you for having me.
Two, two, zero, one, East Park Place.
Yes, we'll, we'll have a brief, uh, presentation, staff presentation, uh, Maria Baldinero was our, uh, um, staff planner assigned to this. And so she'll go and deliver the, uh, the presentation on it.
Good evening Chair, members of the Plan Commission. The CUP application is to allow alcohol sales in private recreational events at a golf studio club. The site is located at twenty two, oh, one, East Park Place. The site is located in the urban mixed use south, the immediate area is surrounded by hotels. Office, parking, commercial and industrial uses. The site measures two point three acres and contains a forty thousand square foot building. That is shared by four tenants. Three are office and one is the golf studio. The site has two entry driveways, one of the driveways is shared with two, 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 one. East Park Place, which is to the east, so it's important, as I described, why. We had to condition certain things and I'll, I'll explain that. So, you could see here, the site plan illustrates where the tenant of the golf studio is located. The golf studio is an instructional golf studio and is classified as a fitness club, which is a permitted use. In the M U S zone and the studio occupies nine thousand six hundred and forty square feet. The building and parking spaces are shared by all four tenants. And the studio is a members only club, it's already operating and is open seven days a week. The floor plan illustrates the indoor and outdoor area, the patio, uh, where alcohol will be proposed and the events. The indoor building area again is nine thousand six hundred and forty square feet and the patio is six hundred eighty nine square feet. And you could see I labeled the patio, it does face the street. And it's right adjacent to that second driveway that's shared. The golf studio contains putting green, a lounge and. Other amenities that are typical for a gym. The M U S zone does require conditional use permit to allow the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption. And also for the corporate and private recreational events that are proposed. A specialty food truck or caterer will also be, um. Uh, delivering food for the event, so food will be available during, uh, the time that they sell alcohol. Staff believes that, um, the findings can be made for the approval of the conditional use permit. The site is not adjacent to any sensitive receptors, it's primarily in a commercial industrial zone. The alcohol service and occasional private recreational events will be, uh, ancillary to the primary use. Which is the golf studio and conditions of approval have been included to ensure impacts are reduced. To the neighboring, uh, properties and the tenants onsite as well as the one that shares the driveway. For example, no dining is permitted in the outdoor parking lot area. Pedestrian access, uh, cannot be obstructed with any outdoor furniture. The vehicle backup and maneuvering area that's shared cannot be reduced. No food trucks will be permitted in the public right of way or in near the driveway that is the entry access. And those are just a few, uh, conditions that we made sure to include. The proposed use is compatible and, uh, we believe that the. Conditions of approval do mitigate and make the, uh, use not detrimental to the area. Therefore, staff recommends that the Plan Commission adopt the resolution. Approving the project with conditions, and that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I have the applicant's representative here and the manager, if you would like to speak to, um, either of the two.
Thank you, do you have any questions for staff before we open public comment?
Um, when we put conditions such as these on. These permits, um, do they, do they need to also line up with any restrictions or conditions from the lease? From the applicants?
No.
No, that's something that we don't, we don't, that's a purely a private matter, uh, between the less.
So, like if there are restrictions on where food trucks can be or. So like, if there are restrictions on where food trucks can be or not be, or what they can block or not block, that might be included in the lease, we don't?
That could be included in the lease, but I think we
We don't care, we don't look at that.
We took a proactive approach to ensure that there was a condition of approval that if, I mean, we don't wanna specify exactly where it needs to go, but at the same time, in order to minimize impacts to the site and the parking generally, because it is a shared situation with three other tenants, and it's shared, uh, parking with, with the adjacent property, uh, you know, you'll find conditions, uh, in there that, that require or prohibit the use of parking spaces for the parking of, of any food truck that might be used, um, you know, as, uh, you know, to, for, 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 um, serving food. Um, also, you'll find conditions in there that ensures that a, any queuing of, of, of people who may go to the food truck to, to get their, uh, to get serviced, um, you know, need to queue in a, in a situ, in a manner that, you know, doesn't prevent, that, you know, doesn't prevent onsite circulation, uh, from occurring. So there are, there are conditions that, you know, we, we put in there to, you know, minimize some of these potential impacts, we have to kind of forecast some of these things, and I think with these appropriate conditions, it's, it'll be an operation that can, that can function well within that, within that location.
Okay. So it's possible there could, there, there could be conflicts, but we, we don't know about those, and we wouldn't get involved in any of that, we would just put our conditions and whatever, if there's a con- conflict with the, the leases of the neighbors, or anything like that, that's just, that's for them to deal with.
That's for them to do it, but, but I will say though, I mean, we do send the, 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 you know, as, as, as the commission knows, we send everyone the link to, to the, uh, so the property owner presumably was, was also given, and, uh, the, the, the link, and they are aware of the application coming before them. Uh, I know that we also have been in communication with the architect, with his, who also, um, would, would presumably be checking with the property owner for any kind of other restrictions, but at the end of the day, um, you know, if, if there was a concern, the, the, the owner does obviously have the ability to contact staff as well, and also be present here to say, hey, you know what, this, you know, X, Y, and Z might, uh, conflict with, with some of the leases, or from what I expect of, of the, um, of my tenants, and, you know, we can look at, and, and see about amending, or adding, or deleting conditions, but, um, absent that, you know, these are the conditions that we propose, and they'll, they'll be sufficient to, to ensure that the operation, or the restaurant, or the, the, the business operates in a manner that doesn't impact the, uh, adjacent uses.
Okay.
And the notice for this item did go to
It's up on the.
The property owner, and within three hundred feet.
Okay.
This is a random question, maybe for the city attorney, and it might be too in the weeds, but in the miscellaneous conditions, there's the indemnification and, and clause, it's like thirty-three, um, does it, do these conditions, did we require a certain amount of an insurance premium that they carry? Is there like an amount, no?
I'm not aware of an insurance premium, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause like, I rented something from Dockweiler Youth Center for my birthday, and I had a, have a million dollar insurance premium for the day. And so if we're asking someone to indemnify and hold us harmless, how are we sure they can do that, if we are not sure they have insurance policy?
Yeah, that's an interesting point, um, we require insurance of a lot of vendors and contractors that also indemnify the city, um, historically, I don't recall asking for insurance from, um, these types of permit applicants. So that's something we should maybe think about in the future.
Yeah, I don't know who's in charge of drafting the contracts that the city does with that, it's just something that stood out to me, which I know probably has nothing to do with what they're here for, but.
Yeah, I will say, for the commission's benefit, um, I've, I've worked for the city since two thousand and fourteen, I've never had to actually, um, enforce that condition, fortunately, this particular condition for CUPs. Uh, but that doesn't mean that, um, you know, that's something that we could definitely think about in the future, it's a valid point.
At, at least maybe like proof of an insurance, because there's no way they're operating a business like this without insurance, I mean, we know that, um, but we don't know the limits, we don't have a requirement.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something to look into in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just, uh, we can look into it, I, I wouldn't necessarily think that insurance is, uh, the same as indemnification in defense of hiring a, a legal turn, you know, team and, and lawyer to defend. If somebody were to challenge this project, it would be based on SEQA, or, um, they don't agree with the findings, and they don't think that the commission should have approved the project. Uh, and so in that scenario, if somebody were to challenge a project, we would likely just issue a stop work order if they're in the middle of a T I or a build-out. If business was in operation, then we'd probably look at some sort of, um, temporary stoppage of the operation that's specifically being challenged, until it was resolved. Um, but I, I, I just, I don't wanna go down rabbit hole.
It's a limited, it's a limited scenario, I'm seeing that, I'm just throwing it out there. Food for thought, but I understand the limitation within this, the whole harmless agreement, and I'm sure on your other contracts, they're more specific.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, for contracts that the city actually enters into, much like when you rented the facility in Dockweiler, we require, just as, as, as David mentioned, we require insurance and indemnification, and we require proof of it, and
Yeah.
It's a two million dollar minimum, and, and we require all of that, um, for city facilities, or the park, or, um, but this isn't necessarily a contract.
This is related to if something went awry with this permit, and the commission approving.
Pr- yeah, primarily, this is meant for if there was somebody in the community who disagreed with your action tonight, uh, and they wanted to sue the city based on our action, uh, then the applicant is beholden to defend the action tonight.
If we lost though, we'd have to pay money, even if they defended us. Probably, or would it be injunctive relief or something? I don't know, I'm, I'm going down a law school rabbit hole, so just ignore me right now, and I'm gonna just be quiet.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's probably better to not even think about that, but, uh, we can talk offline.
F Y I.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I would question there, what insurance would cover that, though? Like, what insurance policy would that even be?
I'm just talking in general, that if you lose something, generally in a civil form, or maybe it is injunctive relief here, I don't know, where, oh, this, the use is no longer valid, I don't know, if a city, if a member of the community is like, we don't want alcohol at the golf tech.
Yeah.
You guys shouldn't have done that, then the relief is likely injunctive.
It, it would be, yeah, either.
About to stop it.
Yeah.
Instead of money.
Mm-hmm.
My brain just goes to a different place, so I, when it pops in, I throw it out there, but it's really probably irrelevant, so, sorry, guys.
It's, I wouldn't say it's irrelevant, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, what I would say is that typically this would be some sort of, uh, declaratory relief, um, uh, not really damages so much, but, um, the idea is that the city, because we're processing this application, we should not have to expend resources to defend it. So the idea is that the applicant would defend and pay, pay the city's costs to defend it. I don't think there would be damages, but I think to the commissioner's point, it's about verifying that the, that the, the permit applicant has, is solvent, and could cover the city's costs in that, in that event, so it's a point well taken, I'll definitely think about it, um, it might not be insurance, but there might be some other vehicle that we could look into just to make sure that there's, that, that the applicants are solvent and able to cover the city's costs.
You are a real lawyer, aren't you?
What are the hours of operation, I remember?
Eight AM to four PM daily.
Right, and was that on, occupancy?
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, uh, I just asked if I'm allowed to say something, seven to nine is the, are the hours of operation?
Um.
Seven.
Seven AM?
Seven AM to nine PM.
That makes more sense, you asking for alcohol.
Maybe, I don't know.
Uh.
I mean, the other guys who were just here, like, theirs weren't too much longer, like, it was pretty early, I was like, it's, the flower place was like day drinking and flower pickups, but, so.
I, I guess now's a good time to open public comment.
Why not?
Yeah, well, we'll open public comment, um, and we'll have the, the applicant be the first to, to speak at it.
I'm Kyle Stevens, I'm representing, uh, Studio Golf. So, I think what the confusion was, that was for our special events, we give you the times of when those were, versus our actual operation hours are seven to nine.
Hmm.
And it's, uh, we do golf instruction, it's a, a members' club, you can come in, you can work out, we have cold plunge, sauna, sporting events, you can hang out and, and watch, and you can either play golf, or you can take lessons, it's, it's all simulated, so.
So, so there's simu- uh, simulation bays, then?
It, correct, it's all, well, we have a, a live putting green, but everything else is, is simulated.
And normal gym workout stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
It's normal gym workout stuff, too?
Yes.
Okay, so it's like a gym with a golf focus?
Correct, we have a fitness facility.
Got it.
And also the golf, we have, in this one, nine bays, so.
It's a private club, but is it, are there day passes and that kinda thing available, or?
That's a question for them.
We have a member for a day promotion.
I mean, I mean, I don't know.
Oh, you will not be selling.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it, so you can come check it out for a day, got it, okay. And then join, okay. Depends on the food truck situation, right?
Sure. I'm Kyle, Scotty, I'm the general manager and head golf professional at Studio Golf Club.
Welcome.
Great, is this the only location, or first location, would you say?
Uh, it's the fourth location.
Okay, throughout Los Angeles, or other places?
Closest one's San Diego, we have Scottsdale and, uh, El Paso.
Okay, good.
Currently getting ready to open in Florida.
Wow. And have you, you have alcohol and have hosted events at your other locations?
Yes.
Okay. And the events' hours could be different than what you just stated are your regular working hours?
Correct, generally, the, the, the big events would happen during the day.
What's like a big event, I'm just curious?
You know, we might have a, um, monthly members, you know, party, but more, you know, holidays, things of that nature.
Is the setup similar in your other locations, or is this unique in terms of the not food, like, food trucks, but not food? Like, do the other cases have like kitchens and food or any of that stuff? Okay, okay, alright, so this is not unique, so you're used to this?
Correct.
This, this setup.
And, and will consumption be allowed throughout the entire property?
So within our suite and on the patio, adjacent to our, our lounge there, just shown there on the front.
Within the suite, within the, the whole interior?
Correct.
E- even like in the workout areas, and I understand the bays, but, okay.
Yeah, there's not a restriction on it, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna be working out.
Cattle bells and, cattle barrels and beer, I don't know.
You never know.
Between sets.
I, I assume like, well, in, in the bays, they'll wanna have.
Yeah, for sure, that's more likely where they would be.
Okay.
And Chair, just to add, you know, I think, I think the, the way the condition reads too, is that it is limited to this particular suite, we didn't go to the extent of explaining exactly where, because, you know, in the future, there might be some remodels, they maybe take away a bay or two, or, or put in another bay, and so just by merely that reconfiguration, we didn't wanna go, you, you know, you know, burden the applicant with possibly having to come back and revise it, this gives a little bit more flexibility by just saying, you know, within this particular suite, this ninety square, square foot suite, you're allowed to have the alcohol.
Okay, a- and, wh- Wendy, do you guys expect to be operational, or are you already?
Been, been for a month.
Oh, okay, fantastic. Great.
Do your other, uh, do your other locations just serve beer?
Yes.
Just beer, okay. Huh.
Okay, if they have any other questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Um, any thoughts from the dais, or do I hear a motion coming?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And I'll take votes, Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on opening. We've, we've done a lot of, uh, uh, liquor licenses this summer. I feel like people are doing their market research on El Segundo.
I'm not sure how I feel about that, but.
So, okay, so, uh, there's unfinished business, there's none, reports from the Community Development Director?
Uh, only that last night, we had our first community workshop for the land use settlement update, and thank you to those who who were able to attend last night, um, I, we had a pretty, for a summer Wednesday evening, we had a pretty reasonable turnout of probably around fifty to sixty folks, which I think was a decent, um, we weren't sure what to expect, but that was a, a pretty decent turnout, uh, especially compared to some of the la- you know, previous workshops we've held on the downtown specific plan or Smokey Hollow, so we're excited to see that engagement, uh, and, and see the, the feedback that we're already, already getting, and so we'll keep the commission in the loop on upcoming workshops. They will be coming, the consultant team and staff will be coming to the commission on September twenty-fifth for the first study session, where the existing conditions will be reported out, and some of the preliminary feedback from the community workshop and the survey, which is out live, uh, will be, uh, reported out during that study session as well, and we'll start some visioning discussions with the commission and the consultant team, so, um, good start overall, and, and excited to see the, the community get engaged in this conversation.
Thank you.
And as a shameless plug, we definitely wanna keep the word out to the viewing audience to, uh, visit the website. Um, you know, encourage you to, to fill out the survey that's, uh, up, up on, on our website, and it's open through mid-September, so.
September eighteenth.
September eighteen, so, um, yeah, you, just, again, and, and also to thank the community for, 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 for the, um, for the turnout we had yesterday, I hope, you know, we continue to get a lot of, uh, good, good comments and feedback as, as, as this whole endeavor progresses, so. But nonetheless, go on our website, feel free to, 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 uh, to, to click on that, that, uh, survey and, and fill that out.
There's a link in the email you sent, right?
There is, and I can resend a cleaner email, cause I think I included a few different links in that last email, so I, I can send a follow-up, uh, with a direct link to the survey. Uh, you know, any, any help that the commission can provide, you know, pushing the word out is appreciated. Last night, the top two sources of, of, um, you know, people learning of the, the meeting was word of mouth and emails, and the Herald, and uh, the demographics sort of represented the, that last one. But mainly word of mouth and emails, and, and the Herald were sort of the top two or three mechanisms that people heard about it, so clearly, our emails, you know, worked, and, and your emails worked, and and the Herald worked.
When we, when we say emails, do we, are we thinking the city emails, or like, community email groups?
We did a combination. There's a listserv, an active listserv that we manage, and there's a city orchestrated, uh, we call it GUB Delivery, it's a, it's a listserv delivery service that we use, and we have, I don't, I don't know the number, but we have probably a, you have a rough number on.
We sent the emails to about fifteen hundred people.
Fifteen hundred folks. Then there were also emails that we sent directly, you know, personal requests to the, the women's, they also go to Women's Club, and Rotary, and Ki- Kiwanis, and all the different P T A, and all the different groups, and, in hopes that they would help get the word out, it's summer, so it was hard, you know, people are on vacation and whatnot, but, uh, I think, uh, we got a pretty good response, and it'll probably only get better, which is, which is nice.
Uh, I was, I was encouraged by the turnout, for sure, and I thought that the consultants did a good job of setting up the visuals, and it looked inviting, and people felt like they could, um, interact and provide their opinions, and once they got going, they got going, so it was good to see that, so I, I'm excited as we kind of carry this forward through the rest of the process, so, good job, everybody.
That's it from staff.
Thank you. Uh, any reports from the commissioners?
I was just gonna say that I have a classic car, and the Main Street Car Show's on Saturday, I'm not entering my car this year, because I have family in town, and it's too much of a commitment, but a reminder to the community that the streets are gonna be closed for a large portion of the day, just mostly Main Street and a little bit on Grand, and to go check out the cars, cause they're very cool. And the Chamber does an awesome job putting that on with the P O A, so, shout out to them all. I'm sorry I won't be there, cause Marcia loves my car, but not this year, Marcia.
Uh, any report from the city attorney?
Uh, nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, with that, we can adjourn, thank you, everyone.